Held to order this meeting in the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, if you'll please rise for the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Schwartz is going to lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. what?
Present.
Madam President, have four.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the April 29th, 2025 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from April 29th. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any cards, but if anybody does want to speak, fill one out and give it to the clerk. Mr. Mayor, do you have comments that you would like to share with us this evening?
Good evening, Madam President. Members of the council, great to be with you tonight. Three things I'd like to just mention this evening. First, I want to thank several of you who joined us this morning for our employee breakfast here. You might see some folks around the city hall today wearing their noble t-shirts. This is an annual tradition that we host for our staff to thank them for the hard work that they put in. We are lucky to have great people working alongside all of us to make us look really, really good every single day. So it was great to see them this morning. We were there from about seven to eight thirty, so nice early morning to try to hit some shift folks as well. So thank you for being here and just thank them for their constant lion-chasing noble mentality, and I appreciate it. This afternoon, I had a chance to host the new Secretary of Public Safety for the state of Indiana, Jennifer Ruth Green. You may recall Governor Braun has kind of restructured state government in a way to establish some cabinet secretary positions. Jennifer Ruth Green is the Secretary of Public Safety overseeing state police and all operations in that regard, also charged with setting up the state's first-ever office of school safety. And so her office had reached out, actually Liz Desauer, who is a Noblesville native, is her communications director, and asked if we could do a roundtable with her in conjunction with Noblesville Schools to talk about school safety. We have certainly had a front row seat to that conversation for many years now, and I really appreciate having her along with Noblesville Police Department, Noblesville Fire Department, and Noblesville Schools to kind of share ideas and data around what we have done, focusing not only on May of 2018 and the incident we had here in Noblesville, but a lot of the work prior to that, which was, should be commended and highlighted, and then also some of the work that obviously was done post that date and continues to happen. So I really appreciate her and the Braun administration taking time to be here in Noblesville today to have that conversation. And then finally, I'll just remind everybody in case you need reminding that this Saturday is the fifth annual Peony Festival here in Noblesville. We're expecting roughly between forty and fifty thousand of our closest friends to join us for a beautiful day for something I still cannot believe has turned into what it is today, but kudos to Kelly and Lindsay McVeigh, the McVeigh sisters, I appreciate me saying that, for all the efforts that they have done. Thanks to countless people, you all have been involved in these conversations. It is a heavy lift to get that festival completed on Saturday. A lot of our public safety officials will be out there making sure traffic is directed. It's great that we have all arteries leading to Noblesville open this year. You may recall, we had thirty-two close down last year, so that will just be an awesome opportunity. I hope to see some of you on Saturday or Friday evening for peonies in the park as well. So with that, just thanks for all that you continue to do and appreciate your continued service to our great city.
Thank you. Any questions, the mayor? As you, yes, you can go sit down. Thank you. Council committee reports. Roads Committee, Mr. Boyce.
Yes, the Roads Committee met on the first Friday, per usual, and this time, we have quite a few things we discuss. Pleasant Street, Phase One, the landscaping continues, but other than that, it is complete. Phase Two, lots of work on compressing the land there, so there's no new closures that are coming up right now, but they're really doing a lot of work there. It's been a little bit more difficult than they had expected it to be, but their work getting good on it. Phase Three is actually on schedule and looking good for the bridge. So the next thing is the closures on Heg Road, which are going to start in July, and then they actually will have to close both State Road and Heg Road there for a month. So that's going to be a little bit difficult on the west side of town. For highway safety improvements, then we were granted and likely to be scheduled on 2027 for replacing the ADA sidewalks all through Old Town. Nickel Plate Trail, final design agreement has been signed, was signed at the Board of Works a couple of weeks ago, so that's looking really good there. Logan, Clinton, the Brick Rehab Project, this is not removing the bricks, but it is doing a rehab there. They've got a survey that was completed, is going to be completed on the 22nd of this month, and they're going to need no parked cars on the street during that survey. Greenfield Over Wheeler, the final items are currently going on, and it should be opened now.
It is?
It is. Then Allisonville and 146th Street, even though that's a county project, then it looks like they think in July that we're going to have left turns available there, and it looks like it is still on schedule to open at the end of the year. And State Road 32 Bridge over White River was planned to close so they could repaint it, but that is getting pushed out now so that we can get a lot done on it once they do close it, which I think is a very big benefit rather than just closing it just to paint it. That's the major stuff that I missed unless Mr. Schwartz or Mr. Thurston have anything that I missed that add on for you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I think so. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Finance Committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met, Pete Schwartz, Ann Smith, Todd Thurston, and myself. Holly Ramone gave us an update of the Benefit Self-Insurance Performance Review for 2024. We had Stan Jackson and Mark Good past year with Apex Benefits that went over that information with us. And Holly also discussed a 2025 Salary Ordinance Revision. That and the Claims Docket come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Davis?
Make a motion, we approve the claims?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. New ordinance for discussion. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 13-05-25 and Salary Ordinance, Amending Ordinance Number 57-09-24A, salaries for appointed officials and employees of the City of Noblesville for 2025.
Move into this.
Ms. Ramone.
Good evening. Holly Ramone, Human Resources Director. As indicated on your attached letter, and there's also an X on the salary ordinance, indicates just a few changes that we have for the ordinance. The first one there is Communication Specialist. This position is designed to help support our mayor's office and communication team to really help enhance our communication efforts to the community engagement, and also some program enhancements and expansions. Next, we have two positions, Economic Development Coordinator and Facilities Manager. Unfortunately, due to an oversight, what was the salary listed on the ordinance was stated incorrectly and was not the amount budgeted for, so that's been corrected. Next, we have Payroll Manager. As you probably know, we have Acxiom is doing a review of our payroll system and really working with OFA to modernize our payroll system. This position is aiding in that, and we did remove the Payroll Specialist position from the Salary Ordinance. And then for our Fire Department, we have really just two title change. The first one there is the Captain Deputy Fire Marshal. There was a Lieutenant in that role, and now there's a Captain that's been put into that role. And then our EMS Duty Officer, we simply added the title and rank of Lieutenant just for clarification purposes. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mrs. Ramone?
Change to the budget, is this net zero out budget-wise, or we?
I believe yes. I know it was discussed in Finance during that time, and I apologize, I don't recall exactly. I know we've had some little changes in each department for positions. We have currently a Press Secretary. He has put in his resignation, so we're actually taking that position down. So there's kind of, in total...
That would actually be a negative or positive effect to the budget.
Yes. Less than...
To your question, Commissioner Johnson, a lot of these is able to be made up within existing budget funds that are already available from unfilled positions or those type of things. There will be no addition to a budget at all, so.
Anything else? We will see you in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Holly.
Moving on to the proposed development presentation. Council to hear introductory information concerning a proposed development on approximately 124 acres north of and adjacent to State Road 32 and south of and adjacent to 181st Street, east of Promise Road, to be known as Parks at Crossroads. Good evening, Mr. Davishawitz. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, and good evening. For the record, John Davishawitz, Land Use Professional, Law Firm Nelson &amp; Frankenberger, with offices at 550 Congressional Boulevard within the city of Carmel. We represent the petitioner of Boomerang Development. Here tonight, on behalf of Boomerang Development, is Chris Worth. Corby Thompson, also of Boomerang, had a conflict this evening. He asked me to offer his apology, to let you know he's a member of the Board of the Hamilton County Community Foundation, and they had a meeting this evening at the same time. Our presentation this evening has indicated as an introduction for a rezone and preliminary development plan for a for-sale mixed residential community to be known as the Parks at Crossroads. The first exhibit I have on display here is included behind tab two of the informational brochure we provided the council, I know, was distributed in advance of the meeting. The subject site consists of approximately 124 acres and is located north of and adjacent to State Road 32, south of and adjacent to 181st Street, and east of Promise Road. The site is currently zoned R1 residential, and Boomerang has filed its petition in front of the Planning Commission for a rezone of the site to the Parks at Crossroads Plan Unit Development. The Parks at Crossroads will open up this northeast quadrant of the city and jump-start the area with a development for a residential community, including a mix of home product This is the preliminary site layout for the proposal, and it's included behind tab three of your brochures. The community will be anchored by a large centralized amenity area with abundant green space and outdoor amenities. The project is purposely designed with a large pond along State Road 32 to buffer the majority of homes on the site. Community amenity areas are located throughout the neighborhood, including seating areas, sports courts, community gardens, gazebos, trails, and three dog parks within the community. A community swimming pool and bath house will also anchor the development, open space areas. Street trees and common areas landscaping will complete the transformation of this area into an eye-appealing, active, and creative community. As I indicated, there are several different home product types, and this illustration here just gives you an idea of the specific location of each one of those. And as shown here, there's approximately 350 homes proposed for the neighborhood, but that breaks down into smaller numbers. There will be townhomes in this specific vicinity here. On the south side of 32, there's commercial area. The comprehensive plan calls for commercial development to our east, so those townhomes kind of transition and buffer from that space into more of the area in blue, which here is two-family dwellings, pared villas. The area in gray is single-family lots that are approximately 60 feet wide and greater. And then the area here is larger lots, 90 feet and greater, an area for the most valuable homes that are proposed on the development. Regarding these home product types and architecture, it's included behind tab four of your brochures. Boomerang is proud to partner with D.R. Horton as the home builder. With D.R. Horton's extensive portfolio, they're able to bring a variety of housing types and styles to create this multi-generational neighborhood. Homes are geared towards buyers looking for luxury homes, move-up, first-time homes, as well as low-maintenance homes. Each product type will have multiple floor plans and elevations and styles to provide architecturally varied and appealing streetscape to meet the needs of the home-buying public. Boomerang and D.R. Horton have purposely placed 58 large home sites in the northeast quadrant and project that type and style of development to continue as one moves north and east in the community. Each of these homes will feature side-low garages, and anticipated price ranges are between 600 and 800,000. The next area is that area that are 50 and 60-foot-wide lots, and those include ranch and two-story homes, and the values anticipated there in the area where there's approximately 115 lots is 375 to 500,000. As I indicated, there's another section that includes paired ranches, those are shown here, and they would range from between 325 and 400,000. The last product type, which was the townhomes, and these townhomes will have front doors facing the street with alleys positioned to motorcourts or driveways positioned towards alleys or motorcourts to the rear of the home. There are approximately 120 of these three-story alley-loaded townhomes, and values there would range between 300 and 375,000. In conclusion, we look forward to presenting the matter in front of the Planning Commission. That would occur on June 16th. We have scheduled a neighborhood meeting for Wednesday, May 28th. Once we mail out that notice, I'll provide a copy via email to all council members as well as staff to provide an opportunity for you to attend if you so choose, as well as planning staff. I want to thank you for your time this evening, and we'll remain available to answering preliminary questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Davishawitz? Mr. Thurston?
The community meeting on 5/28, where will that be?
We're tentatively scheduling it to occur. It's one of the conference rooms at one of the hotels that's next to Hamilton Town Center, so it's about a 10-minute drive from the subject real estate. I apologize because I just don't have the hotel committed to memory.
Other questions, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, John, a couple of things. 354 homes on 124 acres sounds pretty dense in terms of the housing there, and just a comment, and then I just want to make sure, would like to ensure that as this will represent an eastern gateway into our city from State Road 32, that whatever goes in these parcels does indeed represent the fit feel and character of our community. Yes, sir.
On the townhomes, I know this is preliminary first look. It looks like they're going to be, the garage will be lower in the back than the front? Is that how that, Tobe?
Yeah.
There's a windows, a long window. I don't know if that's how it's going to be, but they're three-story.
And the first level will be at grade.
At grade, but I mean, at the front, it looks like it's a little higher than the back, looking at the picture. If that's the correct picture, I don't know that it is. I don't know if the ground is undulating enough out there, or you'll make it that way.
Yeah, it's not a half-story, but it's a bit, it's a step down.
A step down, okay. And then also, those dead-end streets, how would trash and municipality, fire, how would they traverse those?
We had some modifications to the layout of the townhome area to address that.
Yeah.
And Planning and Fire asked us to loop.
Loop them.
The one here, loop through the middle.
Okay.
And these were short enough, and they'll be a And these were short enough, and they'll be accommodated for a turnaround to access the units that are far away. There's also a cul-de-sac there, and we may have to coordinate on a couple of locations for positioning of rollout trash for working with the trash company.
Get them out to the road, you mean?
Or very, or in a centrally location rather than at the end.
And then that driveway, will that driveway be able to hold a vehicle?
Yes, sir.
At length?
It will.
Okay.
They would be designed, the city has specifications now because they're seeing more development with alleys. It's not downtown alleys. These are more like, you've got 18-foot of travel surface and the ability to access it with larger vehicles.
Okay. Ingress and egress off of State Road 32 into the main entrance to the development?
Yeah, the main entrance to development will be located right here. There's also access to 181st Street. 181st connects approximately there at Promise Road. And this will be lined up, this entrance on 32 will be lined up with the development to the south. It's already been through zoning. That's the Crossroads Development.
Hello, Mr. Peterson?
Before Mr. Thurston asks, the rental restrictions, I don't know if you've had a chance to address those with your client, but the same ones we've seen before.
We have, and we anticipated the question coming up. We'll incorporate that as part of our presentation to the Planning Commission and return back to the Council with a very similar, if not identical, set of standards, or commitments, rather, that you've reviewed in the past.
Thank you. It also appears that some of the units along 32, those will not have garage doors facing 32, correct? There's some front-loaded and some rear-loaded units?
We can take a look at that. When you say facing State Road 32, there'll be four homes located here that are roughly 350 feet removed from 32. These are 500-plus, and they would have their front doors facing that internal street. But we've also got, if you see along this perimeter, so State Road 32 has about a 60-foot half right away. You've got another 50-foot of landscaping, 150-foot more of the pond. Beyond that is where the first closest homes are. And these homes here would have garages facing internally, and the townhome dwellings along this segment right here, that would be their front doors facing and the garage doors facing internal to the site.
Okay. That was the ones I was worried about.
Mr. Boyce?
I realize I'm only one of nine, and, John, you've been able to count to eight without me quite a few times, and so that may be true here, too. But I just said, I feel like we have done quite a bit of this very dense neighborhoods over the last few years, and I just really worry, especially as I go to public safety tomorrow and hear about how we're struggling to keep up with, keeping up with public safety as fast as we're growing and some of that kind of stuff. So I would ask for all of us to move with caution when we look at these high-density, these high-density neighborhoods, and it makes me scared to see more of them coming this quickly because we are having some issues keeping up with all of our infrastructure as it is because we're growing so quickly, so.
Other questions?
I have a question. I'll ask this because Brian Air would have asked it, and he's not here. And the, what'd you say? Yeah. The townhome area, are those streets able to accommodate cars parking on the street? Like, if you have a visitor coming, where do they park?
There is going to be off-street parking for guests provided in certain locations, but the streets that are in front of the townhomes that won't be encumbered by driveways, those can accommodate parking on both sides of the street, and they're designed to the city's specifications to allow that.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah, Mr. Thurston, sorry.
I do share a little concern with Mr. Boyce on some of the density stuff. However, I will add just a couple of things that I do like. I like the duplex product that's coming here. I think it's something that we don't have a lot of. I also like, and I've started to have some conversations with other developers about when you have these large neighborhoods, not just having one green space and one spot, but having some open areas throughout the development. The term I use almost like pocket parks, or I think you even said sitting areas. You know, I like seeing that, and would like to see more of that in future developments as we move forward. More areas for the community to gather as a community within a community.
Yes, Mr. Elliott?
The entire community is going to be built by D.R. Horton, is that correct?
They are the planned home builder for all the lots.
Okay. Do you know if we have a D.R. Horton product in Noblesville at the moment? And my second question is, have they built a $600,000 to $800,000 product in Hamilton
The answer to both questions is no, there's not currently a neighborhood within Noblesville, and two, there isn't a community in Hamilton County where they're at that price point. This would be the first community that they're bringing that product type, and they feel like it'll be successful in this marketplace, and specifically in Noblesville.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Are there other neighborhoods that you could send us examples of?
I'll send the Council an email tomorrow with both Horton neighborhoods and the closest, if there's one in the Indianapolis market yet, because Horton is newer to the Indianapolis market, with product at that price point. And if we don't have it there, I'll direct you to product that they have in other markets in the country that are reflective of that price point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was going to be my question, this.
D.R. Horton didn't get to be the world's largest by not absorbing some companies, too, so you can take credit for those as well. I had a couple of questions. So this has been in front of the Fire Department, so you've got some comments about public safety already. That's where we ended up with the alley situation.
I think our TAC meeting is on Thursday, and Darrell Cross and his department, I think, provided comments today. I haven't digested what those are, but definitely before we reach the Planning Commission level, we'll get comments from not only Fire, but Engineering, their consultant, and Planning.
Follow those rules to make it safe.
Yeah, if they have suggestions about public safety, we're going to make arrangements to.
Can you talk a little about, I mean, the density, going back to the density, this site, the sites south of it have had some significant infrastructure challenges? Could you talk a little bit? I think this site has, needs to be dense in order to absorb some of those things, so I don't know if you can talk about the sewer interceptor and some other things that have created this density?
Yeah, they, currently Boomerang Development's working with Economic Development on the site to the south, and the Council will see a development agreement as well as potential amendments to that plan to help address it. They're pulling sanitary from the interceptor that runs along the creek, so clear south, not the neighborhood to the south. I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but there's a neighborhood south of 38 that they're not tapping into a manhole right there. They have to pull sanitary from the interceptor along the creek through that, through the site, through this site, and up here to the north. I don't really think that's not, the financial obligation of extending the sewer isn't the rationale necessarily behind the intensity of the neighborhood. It's purposeful in that they're providing four different product types throughout the site to try to create a multi-generational community where there's opportunities for folks who desire that two-family dwelling, and no maintenance. The townhomes are fully maintenance included, and then you have the larger homes that'll move up to the $600,000 to $800,000 product that's in the site. That's going to create a situation where people, you know, if they're buying today and they're buying at $450,000 or $500,000, they have an opportunity to stay in that neighborhood and move up within that neighborhood, and that's something I think that's unique in Noblesville. There's not very many opportunities where you establish roots and you can buy a home in that particular neighborhood and stay within that neighborhood in the friend network that you established when you initially moved to a community. I think that's something unique that's being presented here this evening that both Boomerang and Horton are excited about putting together, and I know the, I guess, the fruit of that won't be seen for several years, but it exists where it doesn't exist today.
Thank you.
So I would be interested to see how this development correlates to the Crossroads development, because as I recall, I mean, it's been several years since we saw that, that there's to be townhomes or stack flats and other joint homes. So are we duplicating that just going north of State Road 32? And so how does that whole development look together?
I'll bring an exhibit, and we'll present that exhibit to the Planning Commission that shows not only this portion but the south. There was an exhibit that Corby sent me this afternoon, and I couldn't get it to print out, so it's on my laptop, and it shows the area to the south, which will include multifamily and single family as you get over to, I think it's called DeShane, further to the east. So there's single family over that direction. There's multifamily included as part of the proposal, and then there's another area where there's an attached product. So when we're looking at mirroring what's across the street, that multifamily and attached kind of sits across from the townhomes and the two-family dwellings, and the single family, as you work your way east, sits across from the single family. There's also commercial as part of that development that we're not including commercial, but it extends the roundabout that is at the corner of the Crossroads Development, extends a little further west, so we're not right in the middle.
Well, part of this is back to the comment Mr. Boyce made, and Mr. Thurston echoed about the density, is just taking a look at that whole area. I think we need to take both of those into consideration as we are looking at this.
Last one.
Yep. Mr. Thurston?
Noblesville or HSE schools?
Noblesville.
I thought so. Just confirm.
The Divining Line is one property removed to the east.
Yeah. Thank you.
That line, I believe, is right there.
It's Summer Road, when you're on the south side of the creek.
Thank you.
Anything else? Other comments? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
If we have additional questions or comments, we can feel free to reach out to you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that is it for the agenda. We are now to council comments.
You tell how great the, we're getting ready for the Peony Festival. They're mowing the grass at 6:30 on a Tuesday.
You have to vote every two days. The only comment, we are just about to complete the BOT Contractor Selection Process for State Route 20 with the Utilities Department. We've interviewed and had presentations from three qualified contractors and finalizing that selection at this point through public works in my office. That process is moving forward, much to the joy of our friends on the west side of Noblesville.
Great. Mr. Thurston?
Madam President, I'd just like to draw the attention to anyone who might be watching the PGA Championship this week. Eric Steger, who is a PGA professional out at Pebblebrook, qualified as a, at the PGA Championship of America in Florida, and so he will be representing Noblesville at the PGA Championship. They're down there now for practice round. Tournament starts Thursday, but kind of a big deal. His dad was on the caddy, was caddying for him in the qualifications, and kind of cool story, his dad actually played in the US Open, too, so to see the family ties there as well. And so I've seen Noblesville, I'm sure you've seen a lot of that, so.
That's awesome, yes. Mr. Mayer, yes?
Can I chime in real quick on one more topic that I should have mentioned earlier? Mr. Boyce did a great job at it, but I promise to bring this up in every conversation I have about the closure at State Road 32. This is going to be a challenging closure for all of us, and I don't want anyone to be surprised about it. So just to reiterate what Mr. Boyce said so eloquently, if you recall, this is for kind of the final piece of Pleasant Street to be put in, which will allow for a roundabout at Hague Road and State Road 32. So starting in June, Hague Road will be closed. Just Hague Road, you'll still be able to go across State Road 32, just Hague Road to the north and south there will be closed. And then starting in July will be a full closure of that intersection at State Road 32. It'll be a 75-day closure, hoping to open the entire corridor there by early October. Again, it's going to be a huge challenge for a lot of us, myself included, every single day, Mr. Thurston, as we traverse, we'll find some new areas around the city to discover. But again, our goal is, and we would ask you to come alongside us as we continue to message this out. We've met with HOAs in the area, we have Oakmont HOA and businesses over there, so just trying to make sure everyone is fully aware, the decision to go for a full closure really was completely necessary because we were tunneling underneath 32 to put the Midland Trace Trail under 32. But at the same time, we've experienced in the past what a partial closure looks like. I'm thinking the Witcombe Ridge-Oakmont Roundabout. That takes about 18 months when you straddle seasons like this, so I think ultimately it is by far the right decision to do a full closure, but it's going to take all of us to continue to message to constituents that that is coming. It will not be easy, but will be necessary, and the end result will be a great upgrade for our infrastructure in the city of Noblesville.
I mentioned you were going to do a teaser for that video. Have you done that yet? They said you were going to be doing that soon.
There is some video, stuff that will be pumped out starting this week. So we were on-site doing some videos last week just to kind of try to reach every possible media market that we can with this message, including nearby businesses, so.
Absolutely, but we don't have the map yet, correct?
We do not have a finalized map yet for detour routes. In the video, we discussed Little Chicago Road to 38 being a main detour, which would make a lot of sense. There's obviously Mill Creek there and some other roundabout areas to go through, but again, going to be a huge challenge for all of us, and just appreciate everyone sticking with us through this conversation.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.